Mr. Mayor, it is 5:30.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Let's get this meeting started then. My name is Rick Bonilla. I'm the mayor here of the city of San Mateo. I want to welcome everybody to this special meeting Monday evening, March 7th. I will now call this meeting to order, and Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gothols.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappen.
Here.
Mayor Bonilla.
Here.
Thank you very much. I'm going to read the reminder regarding the COVID health orders. Due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling on phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. So tonight, we have a study session. First item is the City Council Strategic Plan Draft Review. And I believe we have Kathy Kleinbaum to present on that tonight. Welcome, Kathy.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Give me a moment just to share my screen. Hey, is everybody seeing my screen?
Yes.
Wonderful. So I'm here tonight to present you with your 2022-23 draft strategic plan. So just as a reminder of the process that we have been going through every year, the very first step in the process was our extended meeting on January 29th, where we reviewed last year's strategic plan, revised the objectives that were on that, including removing some that had been completed and adding some new objectives, and in addition, evaluated the priority to assign to each objective. What we are here to do tonight is to review that draft that was created from that meeting. City staff has since added a proposed work plan for every single item on the strategic plan, as well as identified any resources that may be required in order for staff to complete the item. In addition, tonight, we're here to take public comment on the strategic plan as it was developed. Once we have gotten council comments and made whatever revisions are necessary, we will bring that strategic plan back for final adoption. We're targeting April 4th. It most likely would be on the consent calendar portion of the agenda. We will also plan to return in the fall, probably September or October, for a mid-cycle review of the strategic plan to check in to see how we're doing on each of the objectives in the current plan. So to start us out tonight, in the strategic plan, the very long tiny print matrix that's included in your council packet, there were a few items that were highlighted. So these are items where we are going to recommend either removing them from the strategic plan or adjusting the priority. So the first of those items was creating a COVID-19 children's programming, which was something that we put on originally in the prior strategic plan during the height of COVID. We are recommending removing that, but for good, positive reasons, the Parks and Recreation Department has now returned to their normal programming and activity schedule. So we no longer feel it's necessary to track this as a civic priority. The next one that we recommend a change to is planning for the downtown grade separations and long-term train corridor improvements. For this particular item, it was put on by council and given a B priority, which typically means it's not something being worked on this current year. But staff is planning to move forward with some grant applications related to this item. So we recommend changing the priority to an A. And on a similar note, the last item is exploring options to discourage commercial vacancies. And this was a bit of an oversight on our part. You actually have been addressing this item. You had a study session on it this past year in October and asked staff to bring back some policy options, which we're planning to do so in April for consideration. So it is currently being resourced, and we do recommend that also go from a B to an A. Next, we're going to move into the items that we've identified on the strategic plan that will require resources. I'm just going to apologize in advance. I have multiple slides with multiple items on them. Going to try to get through them as quickly as possible. I do have representatives here from every department, so if you have specific questions during the question and answer, they are available to provide more detail than I am providing during this presentation. So the first item that does require additional resource allocation is the structural issues at the Marina Library. So this, there's a range of costs from $1.5 to $2.5 million. The final cost will really depend on whether or not city is successful in obtaining grant funds for that project. Next, I have two items that I grouped together, the 100% trash mandate and implementing the mandates for composting in multifamily dwellings. This is a situation where those two items combined require the hiring of an additional staff member, a environmental compliance inspector, which will cost roughly $150,000, just short of that. The next item is implementing a green fleet by 2030. And this is an item where we do know it will require a substantial amount of funding, but we have not yet done the analysis to determine the amount of funding required. So that'll be part of the work plan that's brought forward this year is really identifying the resources required to meet that proposed deadline. Next on the list, we have expediting efforts to reduce potable water from the Clean Water Program. This will require $150,000 to complete the next phase of the studies necessary for this. I think the total cost of that study is $1 million, and the rest of that is going to be paid for by other partner agencies or other sources. Then we have implementing the bicycle and pedestrian projects and programs. And this requires roughly $79,000 for a Safe Roots to School Coordinator, in addition for program costs for things such as hosting the annual bike rodeo. The next item is opening a public bathroom in the downtown. We actually have some existing city facilities that have bathrooms that could be made available to the public, but there would be additional costs for our downtown cleaning contract to clean those on a more regular basis. There may be additional costs for increased maintenance if there's issues with vandalism, but that would be sort of to be determined as we are operating the bathrooms. Next is leveraging technology in support of safe and secure neighborhoods. This does require a new analyst position in the police department. However, that is on your agenda tonight as part of the regular meeting for approval. And there may be other costs related to whatever technology is recommended for purchase, but those will be determined at a later date. The next one is the Diversity and Equity Task Force. Staff will need funding to help cover the cost of facilitation for the meetings. And in addition, staff will be bringing forward in April the discussion of creating an internal strategic plan related to diversity, equity, inclusion. And that $50,000 that is proposed there would cover the cost of both of those items. The next item is analyzing density minimums for mixed-use projects and updating the density bonus and community benefit policies. And this will require funding for consulting assistance. And we have developing a funding strategy for existing infrastructure plans. This one will require some funds, or where staff is requesting funds for grant writing assistance to help obtain grants for implementing the infrastructure plans. Similarly, skipping over one, the plan for the downtown grade separations also would require some funds for grant writing assistance, similar amount, but I think those are two separate allocations. The one I skipped over, reviewing municipal code provisions related to the development review process, would require up to $300,000 in consulting services for staff to execute on that item. We are getting towards the end, I promise. Next on the list is designing implementing capital improvements for the permanent street closure or pedestrian mall. That is an item where council just a few months ago approved a design contract to complete the design and do cost estimates and construction documents for improvements to the pedestrian malls. This is our estimate of what we think the capital improvements will cost, but that will be further determined by the completion of the design. And we have adopting a retail cannabis ordinance. We would require roughly $200,000 in consulting services, primarily legal assistance with developing that ordinance. And then last but not least, is developing portfolio options for sustained enhanced revenues. And I think the cost of this really is dependent on when it would go forward on a ballot. If it were, if we were to bring something forward and the council supported it being on the next ballot because we already have items on that ballot, the cost is pretty small of only $10,000 to add this. It may be different depending on the date that it would go forward for approval. So those are the resources that we've identified. So what we are looking for tonight is for City Council to make any adjustments to the objectives themselves, changes to the priority, based on this additional information of the resources required for each item and also with the suggested changes made by staff on my very first slide. And then in addition, we are looking for your direction and comments on the proposed work plans to be included in the strategic plan. I'm not going to run through all 56 of those, but I can bring up the strategic plan at any point in time to facilitate the discussion on any particular item. Thank you for your time.
Questions for the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please go ahead.
Kathy, thank you so much for that presentation. That was great. Can you identify anything that you just presented that costs money that could also be revenue generating? In other words, the return on the investment is significantly higher than than what the cost to get the program started might be?
That is a very good question. Certainly, there's several items here where we would be potentially leveraging grant funds. So the cost to the city would be reduced because we're able to obtain grant funds. There's other items, for example, the retail cannabis ordinance. I think we'd have to do the evaluation, so I don't know how much revenue that would produce on an annual basis and how that would, how quickly that investment in the consulting work would be paid off if that were to be approved.
And you also identified things like figuring out what we do with the water in the future could be paid for by sewer fees and could ultimately reduce rates to the people who pay the sewer fees if we find a lucrative place for, to sell that water to hypothetically.
Hypothetically, absolutely.
Okay, those are, that's perfect. Thank you for that answer to my question. Perfect, Kathy. Thank you.
Any other council members? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Kathy. And Mr. Mayor, I had a question just as a point of clarification. For, for item, which one is it? Let's see, is it the bicycle, yeah, implementation of the bicycle master plan? One of the things that you spoke to was dedicating a grant, like a grant writer. And I wanted to just clarify, is that, going after grants is not the same as as doing an internal analysis of potential sustained funding sources. Is that, is that accurate to say?
Is accurate. For that particular item, the funding request was for a Safe Roots to School Coordinator and for program funding for some of the programmatic expenses, like the bike rodeo. However, Azalia Mitch is available for more detailed response.
Hi, good evening, council members. Azalia Mitch, Public Works Director. There are two items in the strategic plan. One is just overall grant writing for funding master plans in general. We have been coordinating with a few grant writers on the potential funding sources coming from the federal government. So this would be not just for the bicycle master plan, but really for unfunded projects that have been identified in our master plans. So could be buildings, it could be energy projects. So a whole slew of options that we may have.
Okay, and so that would, that would create a sustained funding source for implementation?
No, so the grant opportunities would not be, that would not, they would not offer a sustained source of funding. These would be opportunities for us to do capital improvement projects.
Okay. Okay, well, I think if we're trying to achieve implementation and get the capital improvements, and you're saying that we're going after the funding to do so, then it essentially accomplishes that. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that we would be addressing, you know, capital needs that are currently unfunded.
Okay. And then I had another question for, as it relates to item number 13, proactively manage citywide parking resources to optimize existing supply. And I wanted to throw out what I think will be an improvement to actually include a pilot project in North Central to implement a residential parking permit program. And I was wondering if that could be scoped in this year as a part of our Priority 13?
I believe we would need council direction for that. At the moment, we do not recommend an RPPP program because there is no generator, and that is something that we have provide, sought feedback from our city attorney's office in terms of what it would take for us to actually redefine the way that we've been applying that program. Typically, there is a generator that is identified, and we do not currently have programs where really it's the residents generating that need. So I think that would need additional analysis, and we would need direction from council. But currently, we are not recommending that program for, for the implications as it relates to other neighborhoods as well, where there is no generator.
Yes, and I, I think that, I hear what you're saying in terms of how the program works today. And my hope is that through the, through a pilot program in North Central that we would be able to do the assessment to see if there is a way to shape the program to fit the needs of, of residential neighborhoods that are impacted by infrastructure projects like the North Central Bike Lane Project. So, so I would be interested to hear from council if there's support for that idea to do a pilot.
Thank you. I think we'll have to hear other commenters and see if they show support for that. Right now, we're asking questions, but if you want to, I would hold back on comments because the public has not had a chance to comment yet at all.
I think the city attorney had something to add, Mr. Mayor.
Please go ahead.
And then I had a question.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just very briefly, Azalia is correct that existing residential parking permit program would need to be revised. Currently requires a generator, which I mentioned at a recent meeting. So in order for a program like that to be created, the entire policy would need to be, would need to be revised, if that is the direction of the council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Attorney. And we've done that before, although it took a really long time. Councilmember Gothols.
I've forgotten my question. I'm sorry. It'll come back to me.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Lee, is that it for you? Okay, thanks. Councilmember O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just getting back to what it would take to change that, that ordinance, how, what would that process be, and how long would it take if we wanted to make that a priority? Because I think that, you know, when we did approve the bike lanes, that, that was a major, you know, one of the major things that we could do to, to mitigate that, that impact. So I, at least for me, it's very important that we, if that's going to take a long time, we start looking into that as soon as possible. So what, what would that process be like, and how long would it take?
There's a question, Mr. Attorney. Could we maybe get a response to that, or our city manager?
I'll start and then pass it along to the city manager and perhaps Azalia as well. I mean, you know, part of it is legal in that, you know, the policy would need to be revised and need to be brought back to council for approval. But it's more than simply rewriting the policy. We just need to consider just the implications of rewriting the policy. We, what, what neighborhoods should have a residential parking permit program, what are the criteria? And, you know, there's a lot of policy that's involved in, in making those changes as well. I think Drew wants to add to that.
Yes, thank you. I, I think the other, the other factor that Azalia covered is the, the, it's, to me, it's not so much that it's, it's different, right? Right now, we, we say there has to be a generator, right? And that's, that's what the ordinance reads. So it's, it's not, it's not that it's, that it's changing the fact that, that it's not a generator. It's from staff's perspective, we're not convinced that we could implement a successful residential parking permit program in that neighborhood because we don't have an issue necessarily. We don't believe there is an issue with non-resident parking in the neighborhood. The overnight study showed where there was the least, the least capacity during the parking study, that it was predominantly people parking overnight. And, and so it's not necessarily a matter of a generator pushing cars into the neighborhood streets. The issue is, is there's not necessarily great capacity, especially overnight, for existing residents. So trying to, we would have to try to figure out how to craft an effective policy, and that would take some, some study and some time. And then if we could, then it, then it's a matter of, okay, what is, what does the new policy look like?
So let me ask you a question about that, Mr. Manager. I mean, currently, the RPPP limits the number of permits to park on the street that each individual home gets. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and it allows them to have a guest, one or two guest permits for when they have visitors.
Sorry, I believe, I believe they, they can have one, one permanent permit per vehicle, and then they get one guest permit.
Okay. Okay, so one, so if they have six cars, they get a permit for each car?
Yeah, can I get a head nod from Azalia? I believe that's correct. Yeah, they get, they get one for each car in the household, and then a guest pass.
Okay. Okay, so I hear you. Let's keep talking. Does any other council member, Councilmember Gothols?
Thank you very much. So I remember that what my question was, and it was right on this topic. And I guess this question is for Azalia. Is it, is it accurate to say that RPPP's help in enforcement of abandoned vehicles? I mean, it's, it's easier to do enforcement when you have an RPP in place. Is that true?
Well, I would say that you can have a permit for a, a vehicle that then becomes, that you own, that then you may abandon, right? So, so I would say that we do address abandoned vehicles. The issue is complaint-driven, so if someone does call and they believe a car is abandoned, our police department does respond, and there's an, you know, an assessment to determine whether that vehicle is actually abandoned and ultimately, should it be towed? So I would say that it, it depends. I mean, an RPPP program does provide a permit for registered vehicles per household, so we don't limit the number. I think the question at hand is sort of twofold. Are we trying to address a prevalent concern of abandoned vehicles? Or are we, should we develop a program that gives a resident the option to park their vehicle on the street? And should that process be through a permit? So I would say that the two options are somewhat separate because we are currently addressing the issue of abandoned vehicles.
And one more question for Azalia. Would you agree that North Central is one of, if not the, most impacted neighborhoods when it comes to residential parking? That it's, it's one of our neighborhoods that's most difficult for people to park? And, and we're talking around what the, what the cause is and whether we can regulate that cause. But it just seems to me it's true that this neighborhood is one of the most impacted, right?
I, I would say that we haven't done a neighborhood-by-neighborhood parking assessment, but indeed, there is the capacity here, as we presented a few weeks ago on our assessment. Does show that while there is capacity, the capacity is at 85% or over with the, and that is with the bicycle project as well.
Thank you, Azalia.
Any other council member? Councilmember Pappen, please go ahead. Please go ahead.
So I just have a, we know that with the implementation, we can all agree with the implementation of the bike lanes, parking spots are going to be removed, right? That initial premise is there, right? Okay, so what I would suggest is, while we don't have your traditional generator, we have certainly changed the conditions there. And so my feeling is, what I might suggest is for folks that have perhaps their work trucks that are coming home at night, we, we noticed that on Amflit, when I saw the, the maps that were done, you know, sort of the heat-generated maps, I did see that Amflit was fairly open during the evening. So now that we're changing and sort of disrupting what's an already impacted area, I'm wondering if we couldn't, and, you know, if it makes sense ultimately, fine, but I'm just throwing this out there. If we couldn't do parking permits perhaps on Amflit for people that are coming home with their work trucks, so that there is a reliable place to park. And, you know, people that put in a long day at least have something somewhat reliable to count on. And Councilmember Lee, you might want to speak to it more. Maybe you're on board, maybe say, that's not going to solve the problem. I just know we're changing the dynamic, which is already a very crowded dynamic. And I'm, I'm wondering if we could, at least for folks that are coming home at night with their work trucks, give them some sense of stability. So by way of a parking permit on Amflit for the evening.
If I may address that. So we are evaluating shared parking options. And we are currently looking at very quickly turning the King Center parking lot for overnight use. And while the intent right now, because that is our priority, is to make that parking space available to anyone. However, we have been talking about the need for, for folks that have a work vehicle. And so the intent would be to either reevaluate King Center in the future or additional shared parking sites for folks that do need to store their work vehicles in a safe space. So while we have not looked at within the, you know, the public streets in terms of designating that as a permit-driven, you know, the use of that riderway for permit-driven parking, we are assessing the shared lots for that purpose.
Does that answer your question? Deputy Mayor Pappen?
I mean, we'll see if it works, but I throw that suggestion out there for, for streets to be used for permitting if the King Center gets difficult. So.
Thank you very much. Another question, Councilmember Lee?
Um, no, I guess that's a comment then. Well, maybe it's a question. One of, one of the things that I think was, is somewhat confusing about the parking strategy, the parking supply strategy for the North Central neighborhood is that on the one hand, we are advancing the red striping program, which is discouraging parking in, in front of driveways. And on the other hand, we are actually encouraging people to park in front of driveways with the apron parking. And so I see that strategy is sort of in, in, in conflict as it's, it's sending a very mixed message to folks. And, and also, you know, my understanding is that the driveway parking, so the apron parking, the ADA parking, not, neither of those programs are, are going to be allowable or eligible for the folks who've lost parking. or eligible for the folks who've lost parking along their street because of the installation of the bike lanes. Is that accurate?
Yet, the latter indeed. Where we're removing parking, residents will not be able to use their driveway aprons to park. So indeed, in terms of the conflicting messaging, we are working on outreach materials. So the intent of the red curb tipping is to really address a prevalent concern that we received from residents, that folks are parking and blocking others' driveways. And so in the morning, especially when people are trying to get to work, they cannot get out. And so they call our police department. And there's a response time loss there in terms of people being able to leave their homes. So through the red curb tipping, we would be striping enough number of feet to make that, to prevent that from happening and make it enforceable from a ticketing perspective. However, the educational component, if one decides to park blocking their driveway, is you would not receive a ticket if you did that because you are choosing to park in front of your driveway. And so there would be no penalty for doing so. And we're currently working on the outreach materials to let people know that even though they may choose to have their aprons painted red, they can still use their driveways to park. So that will be part of our outreach and educational materials that we will work with the community to make sure that that message is understood.
Those are my questions.
I had one more question, Mr. Mayor. You're on mute.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. One more question about changing the ordinance. You know, our ordinance has been based on traffic demand generators, but couldn't we just say something like, on the supply side of the equation, if council makes a change to a current situation for like the good of the whole, like some criteria, like for the good of the city that specifically constrains supply in a specific interest, that would also trigger the ability to create a permit program? I guess I'm not understanding why it's going to be so complicated for us to change this ordinance.
Well, I'll start answering that question. So, you know, the policy, the first criteria is this parking generator criteria, which, you know, it could be revised. State law provides fairly broad discretion to localities in creating a residential preferential parking permit program. I think as the city manager indicated, it would just be a matter of crafting the program to identify those areas where there's, in essence, like a parking crunch or a parking shortfall in determining how to effectively manage the program and identifying those areas. So it's something that I think we can look at and see how other jurisdictions evaluate those types of policies. But again, it would require, you know, some staff analysis of what type of criteria are appropriate if you remove the parking generator criterion from the equation.
Okay, thanks.
So I have a question for you, Mr. City Attorney. Would it be possible to develop more than one RPP, some for specific areas in the city, neighborhoods, that have different issues that we're trying to remedy? That we could shape a second one or third one, whatever it takes for different areas of the city, based on their particular needs?
Perhaps. I think we'd have to research that question. I think it's fairly common to have different residential preferential parking permit program areas as far as having different criteria for each of those areas. That's something we need to look into.
Sure. Well, I'd like to ask if we can look at that. Thank you. Okay, I see Councilmember Lee with another hand.
I just have one more process question. You know, I, you know, I think that we really want to stay innovative and be responsive to community needs. And so I guess I'm kind of, you know, I'm hearing from our city attorney that the legal parameters are relatively flexible and allow us to define our programs. You know, when we think about solving a problem, you know, I keep on looking to the pilots as a model, you know, and we can phase in ideas and iterate, you know, to refine policies. And so, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to better understand how we go about a process of defining a new program. Where is there space for us to, you know, explore ideas and solutions, experiment, and learn from, you know, those experiences? And then, and apply them to a more broad policy? Like, I guess I'm just, I'm confused as to why it feels like there's some resistance or rigidity to this process where there doesn't need to be, especially given the concerns coming from this neighborhood and what I see in here to be a very broad understanding, knowledgement, that circumstances have changed and that this is a serious condition that, you know, that we have a chance to prioritize and help solve.
Okay, well, I think we're supposed to be going through general questions for the entire thing here now. So it seems like we've already questioned this one pretty well. You might want to come up with some comments later for this. Are there any other questions that council members have on other items that are on tonight's strategic planning document? Okay, seeing none, then I think I'm going to move on then to the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have an organized presentation in lieu of other members of the group speaking. And I'm going to invite Robert Whitehair to go ahead and begin that. I will run two five-minute timers for up to ten minutes. We've allowed him.
Okay, great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and give me a few minutes here to get my PowerPoint to come up. Thank you again for the opportunity to make this presentation. And thank you for dealing with so many very important objectives of the city. For us, this group, the existential threat from the climate crisis and our community's response to it, working together is the most important issue right now. As a group, we decided rather than to have twenty or more people that wanted to speak, we thought it would be better to give this short presentation. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. I am joined tonight by Megan Strain, who will take four or five of the slides, and I will do the first part and the end. We applaud all the city has done on climate change. The city of San Mateo was among the first to adopt building codes, the REACH codes. The city won a prestigious award from Sustainable San Mateo County for being the first with a REACH code. It was among the first to have a dedicated sustainability staff. We'd like you to take the opportunity to do the next big step in dealing with the climate crisis. I'm now going to introduce Megan Strain. Megan?
Thank you, Robert. So now the city council has before it in this study session the consideration of an objective to establish policies to decarbonize existing buildings and infrastructure and eliminate methane by 2030. We ask you to adopt that objective. We saw in the staff report that it does state, develop and adopt new building electrification REACH codes for the 2023 building code cycle. But as it is, this does not come close to what is needed. There is too much work, outreach, planning that are needed now and not to wait until the model code comes, which could be in the fall. We have created a sign-on letter to this effect, really focused on that objective. And we have gathered ninety-seven signatures as of right now, including forty-eight from San Mateo residents. Want to go to the next slide? So Robert and I represent the City of San Mateo Climate Action Team. We are residents and business owners in San Mateo with different professions. We live in different parts of the city. But we're all united in this concern about the climate crisis. Next slide. So I really wish we were exaggerating here. But according to the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, which released a report the last year, we have only seven years emitting the greenhouse gases at the current rate before worldwide climate ashtray. But we don't have to wait those seven years. We already see climate disasters happening already in our own neighborhood. In the last few years, we've broken heat records, wildfire records, and we've seen some other extreme weather, and it's costing us billions of dollars. Personally, I'm twenty-six years old, and I, my partner and I have been thinking about kids. And I frankly don't feel safe bringing children into the world on this course. I'm scared of what will even happen in my lifetime, to be honest. So we need to do everything in our power and use all the tools at our disposal to change this course, even just in our city. And that's going to be chiefly by reducing carbon emissions as soon as we can. Of course, we know that climate change is not the only issue we're facing as a planet or in a city, certainly not. But we need to act now or we're going to be leaving current and future generations in existential threat. Next slide.
Too fast, sorry.
No worries. So we have somewhat of a roadmap to success in eliminating carbon in our buildings, even though it's definitely not going to be easy. It's a multifaceted issue, and there's multifaceted solutions. So that includes things like educating residents, assessing our buildings, developing the workforce, finding the funds to do all-electric, and avoiding the installation of tech that's going to be obsolete. And we can't do this alone as residents. So again, we respectfully request that the city start immediately with additional staff time and resources to establish policies to decarbonize existing buildings and infrastructure and to eliminate methane by 2030. Next, Ryan? Thanks. So in California, buildings account for more than a quarter of our state's greenhouse gas emissions. But as you can see, it's even higher in San Mateo, accounting for about forty percent of our emissions. And that's as much as transportation about. So clearly, this is a really big piece of the pie, and it's going to be a huge part of how we tackle the climate crisis in our city. And that's why we're really bringing it to your attention. Next slide. So we recognize that it's definitely not just commercial buildings. It's also in our own homes. There's lots of appliances that if they use gas, it could leak. That's all over the house, but also in particular, gas stoves. Gas stoves can cause indoor air pollution. And there's evidence in public health studies that children who grow up in a home with gas stove are much more likely to develop asthma than those who don't. So using gas in our homes isn't just an environmental risk, but it's also a health risk.
Thank you, Megan. Natural gas doesn't make sense for so many reasons. Contrary to what you may have heard from others, natural gas is not really natural. It's not clean. It's ninety-five, ninety-seven percent methane out of the ground, one of the most potent greenhouse gases on the planet, eighty times more potent than carbon dioxide, preventing heat from escaping the planet than by warming up the planet. Methane leaks from all sectors of the natural gas supply, at the wellhead, at the gathering and processing, compressors, the pipes, transmissions and storage, distribution, and yes, even from the stoves in our homes. Fracking, unfortunately, is the way most natural gas in California is generated. It's extracted from the ground by fracturing or fracking rock using dangerous chemicals that could blue our water and harm our communities. It has harmed our communities with the gas wells. Fortunately, public opinion in this area is on the side of climate action. In 2021, Innsbruck Clean Energy took a poll of over sixteen hundred people in San Mateo County. Eighty-five percent of all respondents supported more local climate action. Even better, seventy-six percent of respondents wanted more aggressive climate action. So the moral of this story is there is strength in the numbers of people who want to do this. There's a strength in working with others, and we'd like you to work with other cities here in the peninsula and in the county. Statewide action has already been taken to eliminate natural gas, started in Berkeley in 2019. Since then, there have been fifty-three additional policies in California. And you see by the green dots, most of them are in the Bay Area. This has led to incentives and pilot programs, support from the energy providers. And then some cities taking the bolder step, and which we are asking you, is to move towards mandatory standards for existing homes and buildings to eliminate methane and to decarbonize buildings. Also, it should note that the Bay Area Air Quality Management District is working on a plan to prohibit the introduction of gas appliances because, as we said on the earlier slide, they emit nitrous oxide. How am I doing on time, Mrs. Management Clerk?
You have a minute forty-two seconds left.
Thank you. Well, there are high-quality electric alternatives for every home appliance. I have pictures of them here. There are high-quality electric alternatives for non-residential equipment as well. And these are equipment normally found on buildings or in the stoves and even a Michelin restaurant. The initial cost of switching to electricity can be incrementally higher. But the reality is your water heater, your furnace, your stove will not last forever. When you do change that in the next few years, rebates will be available to change from gas to electric. There are rebates available, I won't jump into this quick in detail, but there are about $8,000 available from PCE for BayRen Tech Company California on a new program. So if you did have to change out your electrical panel, which we don't always recommend, at least we give someone funding for it. In our case, the cost of, we installed a heat pump water heater, took advantage of the BayRen and Innsbruck Clean Energy rebates, and allowed us to break even the same price of installing gas furnace or gas. Some options and models for successful implementation. Some organizations, some utilities have done what's called on-bill financing. There are low-income programs and PG&E. The point of this slide is there are many ways to carry this out, and there are many ways that are tried and true. Too fast. Well, back to the room exit success. You know, Megan said it well. There are so many things that have to be done along this way in order for residents and business owners to understand the total cost of electrification. It avoids stranded assets. Anything not electric now will become obsolete very quickly. We believe that if we wait till the end of the year or mid-year when the REACH code is adopted after the model code comes out, that's too late. We are calling for you to include the original objective to decarbonize buildings and also add additional staff.
Mr. Whitehair, you're out of time.
We can do this together. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have to stop sharing.
Yes, thank you. And we have two members of the public with their hands raised. Mr. Mayor, three hands. So the first person I'm going to call on is Adam Lorraine.
Good evening, council and staff. This is Adam Lorraine, San Mateo resident. I'm speaking as a private resident, even though I happen to be a Sustainability and Infrastructure Commissioner with the city. I just wanted to give my full support for a potential RPPP pilot that Councilmember Lee was suggesting. And I think I heard a number of council members expressing some interest in this. I feel like I'm aligned with a lot of what was said by multiple council members and the mayor on this topic. I do hear that the city attorney and public restorator were mentioning it would require revising or changing how the city implements the program. But indeed, it seems as though we have a need and an interest to pursue something to this or at least study it. And so I fully support the council and staff setting aside funding and bandwidth towards studying that and/or what else we can do to help North Central equitably maximize its parking supply, given that it just got reduced. I was personally confused and disappointed to see staff ask the North Central residents through the survey about their interest in an RPPP-type program. through the survey about their interest in an RPPP-type program and get relatively positive responses, and then take it to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commissioner Commission for recommendations and receiving a positive response, but then not recommending it to council. So I'm not sure what exactly changed in between those steps. But I think I agree with what council was mentioning about the potential benefits of a pilot and looking into this and what might be possible. I think this would come in handy and be a useful tool beyond the North Central Bike Lanes Project. I believe there will be more bike, ped projects in the city's future, perhaps others that would be in the general plan updates, circulation elements that are being studied, maybe even other projects that aren't necessarily completely bike-ped that will need creative solutions to maximize our parking supply in a modern way. So fully support that and thank Councilmember Lee for bringing it up. And I also agree with the previous speaker kind of on a high level on the urgency, of course, of the climate crisis. And just, I was a little surprised personally by there being no extra expenses determined to be needed for the mayor's priority related to decarbonizing and eliminating methane gas potentially by 2030. Of course, we do have a reach code process. It's been highly successful. I'm looking forward to seeing that process through in the next cycle here. But we, of course, as was mentioned, are going to need to do more, much more, to reach the goal. And even just planning for some of these next steps, like the roadmap that was shown in this presentation, will certainly require funding, bandwidth, et cetera, so I would support that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dr. Brazier.
Hello, this is Dr. Brazier. Hello, everyone. Greetings, Mayor and City Council. There was two items that I did want to discuss about the cannabis. I see that you're exploring this for retail. And my concern is that in the areas that they have that retail, they have increased crime, especially now with the smash and grab. So I'm very concerned about looking to open those in San Mateo. We have had a rise in crime. We don't need another rise in crime. And that has also attracted these sideshows and so many things. Another thing is I wanted to talk about the North Central. As a former resident of North Central, I was directly impacted by the problems with the parking there. And, you know, with the driveway being blocked and even with the red tips for the driveway did not stop people from blocking us or actually just driving into our, in our yard and parking there because they wanted to visit a friend. And, you know, of course, we come home and we find all these things. I think first you need to address the overcrowding in that area before you can address trying to put anything else in that area. It would great, it'd be great to have bike lanes and all these things going on, but then what are you going to do with the cars? These people live there. It's overcrowded, so you'd have to first address that before you can address anything with their streets. It's impossible to reduce the parking in that area. Even King Center is not going to be enough. Right now, the cars are back-to-back around the King Center, trying to find parking because it is an overcrowded area. So it's great that you're trying to find some sort of way to be a little more clean city and have people be able to ride bicycles. But in that area, I think there's other issues that need to be looked at and addressed before you can address those other issues. It's more than a one or two-level problem. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Seema Patel.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking tonight on my own account as a private resident, although I do serve on the Planning Commission. I just wanted to echo some of the previous comments and encourage the council to consider implementing the parking policies that were identified in the outreach to the North Central neighborhood. I, like Adam Lorraine, was a little bit confused when a residential parking permit program was presented as a solution to residents, but then was ultimately not recommended to council. Anything we can do to change that ordinance or look at some alternate solutions that would allow the implementation of that permit program as well as the other parking mitigations identified, I think would be hugely beneficial to that neighborhood. I also am supportive of exploring funding sources for bicycle, pedestrian, and transit improvement projects and would also encourage the city to look at dedicated sources of funding for that, potentially amending any local ordinances we might have around how we can spend our parking and loofes. I think it would be interesting to look into that. And again, want to support previous comments about the importance of transitioning to clean energy and moving our buildings to all-electric as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Monteschemi.
Good evening, Council. My name is Ryan Monteschemi. I'd like to start out by saying I fully support items nine and 28 to complete a transition to a green fleet as well as develop policies to decarbonize existing buildings and eliminate methane gas by 2030. I also fully support item 15 to implement bike and ped infrastructure and programs. It is great that we are funding a safety-to-school coordinator position, that's awesome. We know that we need to develop infrastructure to reduce emissions and reduce our dependence on fossil fuels while improving safety to that end. I also support identifying potential dedicated funding sources for implementing bike and pedestrian projects. We can't just rely on grants alone or else we will not be able to implement these projects with the necessary outreach and staff bandwidth and really pace of implementation that's needed to avert climate crisis and improve safety and reach vision zero. Also, on item number 11, I support explicitly including in the goals the more frequent use of modal filters to calm traffic and reduce traffic volumes on the neighborhood streets. Regarding item 13, I also support this goal to optimize parking. I also note that a variety of parking policy options for the North Central neighborhood were recommended at the February 22, 2022 council meeting. I encourage staff to prioritize implementing these policies. Also, this area sees high residential overnight street parking demand, and the city should implement these policies to mitigate the immediate impact of the parking removal. We should, we don't need to do a full accounting of the impact of a residential parking permit program policy to create a pilot residential parking permit program. That should be happening. I've been involved in the outreach process for the North Central Bike Lanes for the past five months, and what consistently came up as a popular solution was providing permitted parking. We should be trying this. It really, I really urge you to find a way to do this. It doesn't have to be perfect. It can be a piloted, limited geography permit program or a way to provide permit parking around for work vehicles, as was also suggested. I think some kind of combination, you could create a different program that's separate from the ordinance, but find a way to do this and do it as quickly as possible. See how it goes because these mitigation programs are necessary and needed in order to provide the necessary mitigation that was promised by implication in the survey outreach to North Central residents. So I would strongly encourage staff to follow through on this. And thank you very much for your time and best of luck in your strategic plan development.
Thank you. For members of the public, we only take comments once during public comment from each person, so I have one new hand raised from Eric Holm. Eric, go ahead.
Hello, council members. Thank you. I strongly support all the work you're doing to improve bike infrastructure. And I work in Palo Alto where they have a safety-to-school coordinator that has done a tremendous amount of work to improve the structure. And they see numbers of students cycling above 60%, which is really quite remarkable. One comment about, I think the reason you're getting so much public pushback about parking issues and, you know, the parking enforcement's come up. I live in North Central, and despite the comments that the police do a good job enforcing public, enforcing parking, they don't. There's cars that are driven over here and just abandoned, and people get in their car with their friend and drive away. Police on more than one occasion have told me they will not tow a car blocking my driveway until it's more than 50% blocking the driveway. Oftentimes, the only way I can get police to come out is if I threaten to just get in my truck and ram it. So it is, it is a continued process or a problem that is not being addressed at a customer service police level. When they do take it, you can only call and leave a message, they don't call you back. So it's, there's not really any good process that the police does, which I think is what's causing a lot of the outrage from the neighborhood because they don't see anything, any mitigation measures working. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have no other speakers. You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'm closing the public comment period and I'm bringing it back to the council. But first, I have a question that I neglected to ask, which I was reminded by one of the speakers who mentioned this. And I think Kathy, this might be addressed to you, but on item 28, which is the item about eliminating methane gas by 2030, I noticed that it does say no additional resources required under the column for resources required. Could you please elaborate a little bit more on that? What is the actual plan for getting from here to 2030?
So the plan is through, primarily through reach codes. And I do want to emphasize that those reach codes are not just for new construction, but will also, we will be analyzing this year reach codes that look at renovations of existing buildings. And those, there's a lot of work that happens on the state level and across the Bay Area where all of the studies needed to support those efforts are actually funded on behalf of the cities, so we don't need to allocate any money to do any analysis. Our sustainability analyst, Andrea Chow, is making this her number one priority for this next year. And then in addition, we do, as mentioned, through Mr. Whitehair's presentation, there are a lot of resources out there in terms of rebate programs, and we do do our best to leverage those and market those to our resident community. We co-host workshops with other entities to make sure that they're aware of those programs and how they can best access them. We include them in our citywide e-newsletters. All of those, we are able to do with our existing resources, including our sustainability analyst staff person, which is why we did not specifically request additional resources.
Well, thank you, and that sounds like a good start. But I'm wondering, beyond that, I know that it happened in recent months, they had a similar issue that the council was discussing. It stirred much public thought and comment one way or the other. And then they finally settled on, I think, and I'm not really totally up on the details, so I'm hoping you know more about this than I do. But I think they settled on a program to eliminate methane use in the city by 2045. So I think that's the point I'm looking for, which is eliminating, but 2045, clearly in view of what the IPCC is talking about right now and viewing the fact that the known threshold for having irreversible climate damage and increased and ever-growing worse issues of fires, floods, droughts, the whole slew of things, all of the plagues, at 1.5 degrees Celsius, right now we're at 1.2 degrees. So, I mean, there's an urgency here. So I'm asking, beyond, you know, seeking rebates and educating the public and so forth, what are we going to do to actually try and focus on that date for complete removal of the use of methane in San Mateo?
So, you know, beyond the reach codes, which require any buildings that have major renovations, which includes existing building stock, to go all-electric, I am not sure of what other policy options other cities are putting in place. Those are, my understanding, those are the major efforts that are being looked at by other cities. So we have had in the past the reach codes that affected all new construction, but we haven't touched our existing, existing building stock. And again, this is what we plan to look at this year in addition to continuing our reach codes on new construction. So we always, always collaborate really closely with other cities and follow best practices. You know, if there are other policy options that we are aware of, we would certainly bring them to the city council's attention.
Okay, thanks. So I think, you know, what we're really, and, you know, we heard what seven or eight speakers at the city council meeting a couple weeks ago, speaking in favor of this, as well as the presentation we saw tonight, I think what we're looking for is a policy. You know, as with all policies, policies can be written now and altered as we move through time, but I think we should have a policy and we should actually lay out a timeline with milestones that we try to achieve. Because I know that that's the best way to achieve something is by establishing an actual path from this point to that point. Do you think we can do that?
I think we can absolutely look at that, and we could look at other cities that have done that and what milestones they've put in place.
Okay, okay. I think that'll be a good start. If we can at least get that much in writing, then we can further discuss this and try to improve it based on whatever evidence and policies in other cities and jurisdictions that you're able to find. Because I think we can't be the only ones working towards doing this. There has to be some more flesh that's out there that we can add to these bones. And I know funding is definitely a sticking point, but I really would urge us to dedicate funding to a staff person to actually devote full-time attention on this. So I'm hoping that that's something we'll be able to consider for the policy that we're going to be looking at to go forward with us. Okay, thank you then. I think it's back to council now for your comments on the items that we have before us tonight going forward.
I think are we at, I'm sorry. Oh, the city attorney has something to say.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Go ahead.
Yes, just briefly, I want to clarify briefly on the residential parking permit program. So the state law provides that local parking ordinance can include designating certain streets for residents and merchants for their use and the use of their guests. So it's really focused on allowing folks in an area to use those streets. And our ordinance implements that state law when it focuses on excessive parking on non-resident vehicles on residential streets. So I think that's why the policy that goes to the SNI committee focuses on a generator. So I will just say, you know, if the council wants us as staff to look at some options, you know, if it's the manager, like, I think we can do so, but it's within those constraints in state law. So, and I also wanted to briefly mention on the cannabis retail ordinance, the cost associated with that, the 200,000 listed, is mostly, we think, going to be associated with non-legal consulting fees as opposed to legal costs. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Also regarding, since you brought up again the question of the RPPP, I think we need to get beyond having these words, which few people understand, the lack of a generator be the stumbling block. And we need to be the people who get past no on important questions like this because what we have here, and I think this could be the name for the new policy, is a high-vehicle density residential parking permit program. That's what we need. Okay, so to qualify for this kind of a program, there must be high-vehicle density on the streets in that neighborhood. And we can change away from looking for the generator, because we know what the generator is, it's just that we have narrow streets, we have overcrowding, which is, I take quite seriously what the commenter said about overcrowding. We really need to work on that. We have found that situation in that neighborhood repeatedly. We know it causes dangerous conditions and unhealthy conditions. And so we need to find a way also to deal with this. I know the last time we spoke about this, the fire department was looking at getting involved with reporting back to code enforcement when they encountered dangerous conditions. Do we know if that is a policy or a practice that's ever been put in place? That was the discussion when we had the issue on East Tilton.
I've not gotten reports back that, that we're hearing complaints from, from the fire department about lack of accessibility.
So I think the discussion was around if they get called for a dangerous situation, they come out because there's a smoking outlet or, who knows what else it could be? Any excuse to get out there basically and see if we have what we, what we might suspect in some of these. any excuse to get out there basically and see if we have what we what we might suspect in some of these places uh, to call for an inspection with by code enforcement. Um, so the the firemen have lack, lack of accessibility due to what?
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry. I thought I thought the issue was the uh, fire accessibility into areas. If that's not the the case, I'll have to follow up with code enforcement to see if they've, if they've coordinated with the fire on that.
Yeah, I think the issue came up uh, when we had the uh, like, I don't know how many, eight families living in one house that, I think it was, how's it? I think it was three forty-one East Tilton. Um, and that's when we decided we needed to increase and uh, basically improve the relocation uh, uh, policy for that owner who was uh, apparently a repeat offender. Uh, and most likely because he was encouraged by low fines. Uh, so that's why we suggested increasing his cost of doing business when he gets caught and making sure that all the other landlords in the area there know that, because this is the neighborhood where we prevalently see that. Um, and so when we have occasion uh, for any kind of city personnel to go to any one of these houses for any reason, um, that person should be alerted that they should tip off code enforcement if they see certain conditions that we're looking for. Is is that something we can do?
Yes, they do that. They, that that's existing.
Okay.
Yes.
And so we haven't really seen, because how how else can we possibly do something about the overcrowding there? Uh, do we have any ideas? Are there any other jurisdictions dealing with this where we can look for a way to go forward with making the the overcrowding go away in this neighborhood? Because that would help with the parking situation. That's why I bring it up.
Yeah, and I, that I can't answer right now. I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to look into that. That's a much bigger problem to solve.
Okay, so then we're back to what I spoke about, which was the high vehicle density RPPP, which could be unique to areas that have high vehicle densities uh, on the public streets.
Yes, I think that based on what I've heard from the city council tonight, that um, Public Works, City Manager's Office, City Attorney's Office, and the Police Department will get together um, very, very quickly to talk about what kind of creative things can be done with respect to the parking situation. And uh, we will return to council as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you. I look forward to seeing that. All right, well, other council members, please go ahead with your comments. I'll have some more later. Thank you. And I see a handoff from Councilmember Golds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I I don't want us to um, miss the forest for the trees. We um, we are engaging in a uh, a process to identify the council priorities. And I really appreciate that process. Over the years that I have spent as a council member, I have seen this process get incrementally better. And I see it right now as working very effectively to identify the new priorities, the existing priorities, and the priorities that have been accomplished. Um, I I've watched in recent weeks, other cities grappling with these same issues. And they struggle uh, because they um, they they get very frustrated with being told by staff that we just can't afford to do that, we can't afford to do that. And it really stifles the the strategic process. Here in San Mateo, I I really appreciate and I want to compliment staff that this process is very um, helpful in identifying as a council the things that we want to focus on. And and the process matters very much. So I I don't want us to lose sight of that. It it bears repeating every year, and I think each year we get a little bit better. So I just want to thank staff for that. I um, I think I agree with the overwhelming majority of the priorities, and I appreciate the process that we've gotten that we have utilized in order to get to this place. So I I wanted to take up this one minute uh, of my comments just to say thank you. Thank you for consistently coming to us with a process that I think works really well, especially when you compare it to anybody else. So thank you for that.
Okay, next comment, Eric Ritternitz. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I I'm basically going to echo what Councilmember Golds just said. Thank you very much uh, to staff uh, for for consistently um, managing this process so well. And I I I agree with 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 basically all the recommendations that um, that Kathy put forward. I think this is the right way to go. You know, I, this isn't the 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 time where we're saying we're for or against anything. It's like, I feel like I'm ready to move forward on these to learn more information about them, and I look forward to discussion later on this year.
Thank you very much. Next council member.
Are we going to put in the residential parking permit part of it or not?
So that remains for somebody to propose, uh?
I think Drew, so I think Drew just said he's making it an A for this year for right now. And I don't care what we call it. It doesn't have to be an RPPP. I- in some ways, when we call it an RPPP, we're we're suggesting the solution. We're all agreeing what the, what the issue is that needs to be addressed. The tool that's utilized in order to address it, I I think doesn't matter as much. I I I don't care if we call it a specific uh, plan to address the the parking there. Um, it doesn't have to be RPPP. We don't have to put a label on it. But I I think what the city manager just said is that he understands that we want to address this issue in this neighborhood, and we want to do it this year. So I I I think that that message was heard, and and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Golds. And I agree with that. I heard that. I don't care about the name. It's just that we actually take some action. Councilmember Papin, I mean Deputy Mayor Papin, is that, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I know. Are you, are you looking for a motion then with that addition?
Yeah, well, no, we're looking for for, I think, all of your comments. Um.
I I mean, this was a document that took a lot of collective input. And um, I think we are to the point where we should carry it forward, whatever that next step is.
It's so, this is um, it it's a draft review. I don't think we need a motion here. We're just making comments basically and ones before us. So if those are your comments, then we'll go on to the next council member. If nobody else, then I have some comments. Okay, so I do have just a few comments and I'll be able to move on. Um, when I um, well, we spoke about the uh, the north central situation. I do agree with, uh, or I think it's an intriguing idea, what was mentioned by one of the uh, speakers to create maybe a pilot area, maybe just six or nine blocks that could be selected uh, someplace, some part of Humboldt, because I don't think you can leave that out, to test when we get ready, when we decide what we're going to do. Uh, some sort of a program to deal with the parking. And I think that would be um, a way to do it without impacting the entire neighborhood, but see if something works in part of the neighborhood. Um, then also, um, on item fifteen, I'm looking at the uh, bike uh, program, which does talk about back to, I mean, bikes, uh, uh, safe safe rides to school, okay? And but I think we need to expand that a little bit, because uh, I know we're looking for grant funding all the time. I think we should actually, because the bicycle issue is huge in San Mateo. We have large numbers of people uh, asking us to go ahead and complete and get moving on our bicycle infrastructure. So I'm thinking we might want to see if we can add some language to what we have there, which asks staff to evaluate potential dedicated funding sources for bicycle, pedestrian, and transit improvement projects as called for in currently adopted city plans and city plans that are in development. So what this does is no different really from what's there, except we're asking for dedicated funding and dedicated personnel um, to uh, move these things forward as an evaluation. Okay, I think more so than what we've been evaluating so far. And um, I think those are my main things that I wanted to add here right now. Um, and I want to ask staff, is that all we need to hear tonight? Other than that, I mean, I'm in support of all the other, in fact, everything, all of these things. I'm in support.
I believe that's the input I need. I, I'm assuming that I'm hearing also support for the recommendations um, that I made at the very start about items to remove or change the priority of. I'm seeing none.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Then then we're good. Um, we can make those, we can look to staff to make those minor adjustments to some of the proposed work plans for this next fiscal year. We will look at um, incorporating the resources required in our budget request to the city council that'll be coming forward later this, this current fiscal year for next fiscal year. And we'll bring forward this revised plan for approval on consent on April fourth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now we're on to our second item for tonight. We got like ten minutes left. So it's the twenty twenty-two community service results. Do we have a presentation there?
Samantha?
Hello, good evening, Mayor Benia, Deputy Mayor Papin, and members of the city council. Um, I'm going to do my best to keep this as brief as possible. My name is Samantha Weigl. I'm the communications manager for the city of San Mateo. I am pleased to be joined here tonight by True North Research President Dr. Timothy McClarny, who will be presenting the results of our twenty twenty-two community survey and talking about his methodology. I do just want to note that tonight's presentation is just informational, and the full report was attached to the meeting agenda. Is it available on our website? Um, this is the second time that the city hired True North Research to conduct a statistically significant survey of San Mateo residents on a variety of topics. And True North Research has deep expertise in this field and a strong track record of conducting surveys for cities and school districts here in California. And um, Dr. McClarny was also hired in twenty twenty to conduct our very first uh, community survey. Um, you know, typically people are motivated to engage when they are either very pleased or very displeased with a particular service or policy. So that can often mean that we're not always hearing from the average resident who just isn't really opting in to engage with us on their own. And it is our intent to conduct these statistically significant surveys um, about every other year to benchmark community sentiment on city services, quality of life, while also incorporating timely policy-related questions. And then the results can be used to make um, a variety of different strategic decisions. So for this twenty twenty-two survey, we did work with an inter- interdepartmental team um, of city staff and True North to develop the survey. And we did incorporate questions based on some feedback from council that aligned with the general plan updates alternatives analysis phase. And I do want to emphasize that this survey is just one of the many ways that we are collecting feedback from the community and the general plan update process, which, you know, has involved numerous um, community workshops, public hearings, and a more in-depth online survey on the various alternatives. So all those forms of input are being incorporated into the general plan alternatives evaluation, which will be discussed at the March twenty-second Planning Commission meeting, as well as your city council meeting on April eighteen. So again, tonight is just informational, and we are looking forward to reviewing the results of the twenty twenty-two survey. Um, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McClarny.
Right, thank you, Samantha, and good evening, Mayor and members of council. Um, I have put together a brief PowerPoint in the interest of time. I know you're running short. What I thought I would do is share this screen, run through the presentation, and then if there's questions from council, um, I'm happy to answer them um, as I go or at the end, whichever is your preference. Let me go ahead and share my screen here. Everybody got that? Okay, great. So um, just to highlight, this PowerPoint presentation covers the highlights of the study. There is a more detailed full report that's available. So if you like to dig in and look at subgroup comparisons and other things, the the reports can be the uh, gonna be able to provide that information for you. Um, so before we talk about the actual results, helpful to take a brief moment to talk about the survey methodology or how we went about conducting this study. Uh, we use what's called a mixed method approach, where after starting with a random selection of of households, from which we then randomly select adults within the city of San Mateo, uh, we recruit using three different methods, email, text, and telephone. Uh, we allow respondents the option to either take it by telephone or online at a password-protected website. Every link that we send out to a a randomly selected respondent is unique to that individual. So we make sure that only residents of San Mateo can actually take the survey. They can only take it one time. That protects the integrity of the of the random sampling design. Uh, respondents have the option of completing in English or Spanish. I believe we set out to do six hundred. We walked back in the door with seven hundred and seventy-five, so we had a stronger response uh, than we were anticipating uh, based on that uh, that recruit, which is good. Those are just bonus interviews, no extra charge. Uh, and now because this was a random sample of seven hundred and seventy-five individuals, not a census of all of your adult population, it has what's known as a margin vary due to sampling. In this case, that's plus or minus three and a half percent. What that means is we can be ninety-five percent confident that the results we'll talk about here tonight are within three and a half percent of what we would have found had we spoken with all of your adult residents. I will also mention that if you look at the demographics of our sample, uh, they closely align with what the census uh, projects and estimates for the the demographics of the city on key variables like age and gender and ethnicity and homeownership, et cetera. So uh, on to the results. This first slide, at the opening of the survey, we asked individuals to rate the city of San Mateo in each of the dimensions. You see there on the left side of the slide, so the overall quality of life, San Mateo is a place to shop and dine, is a place to raise a family, et cetera. And you can see that um, although these are asked in a random order, they're sorted from high to low here based on that combined percentage of folks who said either excellent or good. And overall, the city uh, gets the highest uh, ratings for the overall quality of life. You had eighty-five percent of respondents say that's excellent or good. Um, as a place to shop and dine, seventy-seven percent. I can tell you that I do this type of work for a lot of cities, and it's not often that shop and dine is number two. It's usually somewhere down around four or five. Um, and so uh, that's a good uh, indicator that folks are happy with your your local sort of dining and shopping opportunities. Um, and and then obviously as a place to raise a family, you had two-thirds of residents say that uh, the city is a good place or an excellent or good place uh, to do that. Um, the bottom of the pile there, San Mateo is a place to retire. Um, thirty-seven percent excellent or good. That's all, that's not uncommon for California cities. California is just known to be an expensive place to live, and when you retire and and your income stream uh, diminishes or goes fixed, uh, there's sort of perception that it's a, it's a more difficult place to live for that. Um, this next slide shows how the results to, of the twenty twenty-two uh, survey compared to twenty twenty. And so that's the percentage of of folks who rated that as uh, excellent or good in both years. And to the right is the difference. And you can see that they're all green, meaning all of the scores increased uh, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two. And four of them have that dagger symbol off to the right. That indicates it's it's a statistically significant difference, meaning we can be ninety-five percent confident the difference that we see between those two surveys reflects a difference in in public opinion and not an artifact um, due to independent random sampling. And so that's great. So, you know, we like to see improvement like that. So overall perceptions of the community have improved in the last two years. Um, following that, we asked individuals in an open-ended question to tell us what they like most about the city of San Mateo that they think should be preserved in the future. You're going through a general plan update right now. Um, part of that is a, you know, a a way of looking out into the future and thinking about what we want the city to look like, you know, ten, twenty years down the road. And so when you ask folks what they'd, what they like most about the community that they'd like to preserve into the future, what you see here are the responses. Um, we did not provide them with this list. They told us in their own words uh, what they cared most about the city and would like to preserve. And we then went back and reviewed those verbatim responses and grouped them into categories you see here. So top of the list, twenty-four percent uh, mentioned something related to parks or recreation facilities and recreation opportunities in San Mateo. Shopping and dining was uh, about sixteen percent. You had about thirteen percent who were unsure. And then uh, mentions of the proximity of San Mateo to other cities and surrounding areas, what they like most about the community. And then uh, finally, their open space uh, references, green space, and mountains. It's worth noting that the top three responses, specific responses in twenty twenty-two were the same as the top three in twenty twenty. The order is slightly different, but uh, the top three are the same top three. So we also uh, asked individuals to uh, sort of flipped it around and said, if you could change one thing about San Mateo to make it a better place to live now in the future, what change would you like to see? Uh, also an open-ended question, so they could tell us in their own words. And you can see here at the top of the list, about one out of five mentioned providing more affordable housing in the community. Uh, that was followed by about thirteen percent mentioning limiting growth, preserving open space. Uh, ten percent were unsure, and then mentions of uh, a desire for improved public safety or more police presence and uh, improving or maintaining infrastructure, streets, and roads. Here again, there's some overlap between the top five that we're seeing in twenty twenty-two and the top five uh, changes that were requested in twenty twenty. Affordable housing is number one this year. It was also number one in twenty twenty, so that's consistent. Uh, limiting growth and open space was number three in twenty twenty, and improving maintenance and infrastructure streets was number four in twenty twenty. So you have some parallels there. Okay, so this next slide really captures what, from a customer um, or a sort of a performance measurement perspective, might be the most important slide. And it's the answers to the question, generally speaking, are you satisfied or dissatisfied with the job the city of San Mateo is doing to provide city services? Because we asked this question uh, for them to comment in in terms of the city's performance in general, right? We're not referencing specific service areas at this point. Uh, it can be considered an over It can be considered an overall performance rating for the city. So you had about 3/4 of residents in 2022 indicate that they were satisfied with the city's efforts to provide municipal services. You had about 16% who were dissatisfied, the remaining being unsure. What we saw between 2020 and 2022 was a statistically significant increase in the percentage who said they were very satisfied. So what's striking about this, I think, when you think about how challenging the last two years have been with the pandemic, I'll have a little more to say about that at the end, is that you've actually been able to increase resident satisfaction with your overall performance during this period, as opposed to even though it was a much more challenging period in general for government agencies to be operating. Whereas that last slide looked at the overall satisfaction for the city's performance, here we break it down into a variety of specific services, and we asked them the same basic question to tell us overall, are they satisfied or dissatisfied with the city's performance? Asked in a random order, but sorted here from high to low based on that combined percentage of folks who said they were satisfied either very or somewhat. At the top of the list, we see providing fire protection, prevention, and emergency medical services. You had 94% of respondents say they were satisfied with the city's efforts in that area, followed by maintaining public buildings and facilities like city hall, libraries, and parking garages, and providing parks and sports fields and recreation facilities. As you move down towards the bottom of the list, the softest response or the least amount of satisfaction was expressed for facilitating the creation of affordable housing. We saw in that open-ended question that that's the one change that residents think is needed to improve the quality of life in the city more than any other. And we see here that that sort of aligns with it being at the bottom of this list, followed by addressing homelessness, managing traffic congestion, and then maintaining local streets and roads. So anticipating that affordable housing was going to be a hot topic, and also to help inform the general plan update, we asked a question again in 2022 that we first asked in 2020, which was to ask folks, you know, whether they feel there's currently too much about the right amount or too little affordable housing in San Mateo for middle-income families, which is that left side of the slide, as well as low-income families, which is the right side of the slide. And you see that in 2022, you had about 2/3 of residents say there's not enough affordable housing for middle-income families in the city. You had about 64% who said there's not enough housing for low-income families in San Mateo. The perceptions changed a little bit between 2020 and 2022. There's a slightly higher percentage of folks who are seeing that it's about the right amount now compared to it was in 2020. But still, the dominant answer here is that there's not enough in both categories and then in both sets of years. So following that up, we wanted to identify how residents would sort of like the city to prioritize among factors that can be considered when planning for future housing, right? I know that as part of the general plan update, there's these alternatives scenarios that are being considered. They're packages in a lot of ways. And so we thought the most helpful way to inform the general plan update, as well as council's decision, is to have residents not so much consider the package plans, but to think about what are the, what are really the factors that are important when the city's considering planning for future housing? And so what we did is for each one of these factors you see on the left side of the slide, we simply asked them to tell us how important they feel the items should be as the city plans for housing over the next 20 years, and to please keep in mind that not all factors can be high priority so that they, a little bit of a sense of competition here. And what's sort of striking, if you look at the list, is that the sort of theme, the dominant theme here is sustainability, right? The things that rise to the top of the list tend to be sustainability-related items. So ensuring inadequate water supply, preserving open space, creating new parklands, minimizing vehicle trips and traffic congestion, creating pedestrian-friendly areas that encourage people to walk rather than drive, and minimizing pollution and greenhouse gas emissions. Those were the things that sort of rose to the top of the list. At the very bottom of the list, you see here, there's a couple items, interestingly enough, that, that sort of step out from the rest as being, you know, viewed as, as less important. That's keeping building heights low and minimizing the number of new units added to single-family neighborhoods.
Finally, can I ask you how much more you have left?
I can hop, skip, and a jump. We have, I think, a total of 20 slides, so we're about halfway through.
Well, we're already about five, four minutes into the city council meeting. What does staff think, I mean, council think? Do we need to move on to the city council meeting right now? I can't see any hands because we have the screens there here, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I chime in, please?
Yes, please.
So it's fine to delay the start of the regular council meeting in order to wrap up this item.
Thank you, I'll leave you favor of that, thank you.
Okay. So moving on, one of the things in planning is, you know, it always comes down to trade-off, right? Some of the most difficult questions that you're trying to wrestle with when you're planning in the future is, well, if we, you know, it's the opportunity cost if we do this, here are the consequences of that. And so, you know, we wanted to ask a few questions in the survey that were getting at these sort of trade-offs that you wrestle with as a general plan update. And one of those questions we had had to do with building heights and densities. And so we informed residents that concentrating new housing in taller, high-density buildings near downtown and near transit would allow more land to be reserved for parks, recreation areas, and community amenities, and will minimize change to existing residential neighborhoods. So that would be the benefit of it. And knowing this, would you support or oppose concentrating future housing in higher-density buildings, either up to 12 stories, which was on the left, or up to eight stories, which is on the right? And what you find is that you have 63% of residents willing to support higher-density, taller buildings up to 12 stories in the community, knowing that it's going to create some of those beneficial trade-offs. And for up to eight stories was 68%. Moving on to the topic of mobility, we first asked residents to tell us how often they use each of the modes you see there on the left side of the slide when traveling within the city of San Mateo. Not surprisingly, nearly nine out of 10 residents indicated they use a personal vehicle on a weekly basis to make trips in the community. You had about 45% who indicated they, they at least once a week will walk from their home to a local store or restaurant. And then beyond that, though, the, the frequency of doing these other things diminishes. 19% ride a bicycle or scooter weekly, and about 8% use public transit such as a bus or train. Now, to help the city sort of plan for, you know, as you add population, you add growth into the future, that tends to create challenges for mobility. And so we asked individuals, residents, after kind of letting, sort of setting up that scenario of, you know, how can the city sort of reduce congestion in the future? We asked them whether they would, what sort of priority they would set on each of the strategies that you see here that are designed to reduce traffic congestion. And at the top of the list, those two pedestrian-oriented strategies, safer routes to schools on the, the top one there, and then improving sidewalks, crosswalks, pedestrian safety signs, infrastructure to encourage more walking were popular, as well as improving bus and shuttle services within the city, as well as to neighboring cities. I will say that if you look at this at the subgroup level, very consistent that the top three strategies you see here are also the top three strategies supported across different subgroups of your residents. Another trade-off question, we, we informed individuals that adding bike lanes and widening sidewalks will make it easier to travel around the city without using a car and could help reduce traffic congestion and greenhouse gas emissions. However, adding bike lanes and widening sidewalks could also require removing a vehicle lane or parking spaces in certain locations, right? So there's the plus and the minus there. And knowing this, do, do they generally support or oppose adding bike lanes and widening sidewalks in San Mateo? Here you found overall, 64% of your residents were willing to make that trade-off and supported adding bike lanes, even if it involves removing a vehicle lane or, or parking spaces. And I will also mention that you look at this at the subgroup level, and it had majority support in every identified subgroup in the survey. A few more slides here. We asked individuals to tell us how satisfied they were with the city's efforts to communicate with residents. Overall, you had 62% indicated they were satisfied in 2022. This is a bit of a step down from what we saw in 2020. When we asked folks whether they, there was a particular topic that they'd like to learn more about from the city, about 30% of respondents said yes to that. And when we asked them to tell us what topics were of interest, here are their responses. About 31% indicated that they wanted more information about commercial and residential development and plans for the future. 13% were interested in affordable housing. And then 13% were also interested in more information about streets, roads, and infrastructure maintenance. When we asked folks to tell us how effective each of the methods you see here on the slide are for the city to communicate with them, email was number one, direct mail number two, social media was number three, and then the city's website was number four on that list. And then finally, two wrap-up slides. You know, I'm going to be brief here because I go into more detail in the full report. You know, overall, this is, I think, it's important to look at these surveys in terms of context, right? Whenever you do a survey, you want to think about what is the context in which this survey was conducted. And obviously, the last two years have been a very difficult period for everybody with the pandemic, kind of turned our lives upside down in a lot of ways. And it's made it far more difficult for cities to perform because many of the functions that you would normally perform, you can't do with social distancing and lockdowns and other things. And so despite those very challenging conditions that make it harder, I think, for the city to perform, we saw that, you know, residents' views of the city's performance in their community not only sustained the high levels that we saw in 2020, but actually increased in key areas. So I think that, you know, from a report card perspective, this is a really good report card on the city's performance. Like any report card, it should not only be how are we doing today, but also looking to the future and where can we improve? When you look at the results from the survey, some of the bullets that you see here on the bottom of the slide are the areas that represent those best opportunities for improvement based on the levels of satisfaction residents expressed in the poll, as well as when they were specifically asked what changes they'd like to see in the city. These are the themes that, and items that tended to come up. And then finally, from a planning perspective, I think, you know, one of the nice things when you're doing planning surveys is, is to have the results come back not muddy. And what I mean by that is sometimes you ask these questions and you get answers that don't give you clear direction. These, the, the results from the survey, when it came to some of the planning questions, I think, were, were, were pretty clear. We see that there's a widespread perception that there's not enough affordable housing in San Mateo for low and middle-income families, and that when the city plans for future housing, there's a real priority placed on sustainability for the city to be considering those factors as, as the, as it decides on what the general plan, ultimate general plan shape is going to be. There was also willingness to make trade-offs for higher-density, taller buildings, as well as bike lanes and things, even if it required removing parking spaces and, and transit, and vehicle lanes in order to accommodate, you know, a future that looks more sustainable. So with that, I, in my presentation, I welcome questions from council.
I see, I'm on the slate, please go ahead.
Thank you so much, Timothy, for the presentation. I, I had a question about capturing younger voices through the survey. And I'm just curious because, like, you know, there are, have been initiatives to lower the voting age and include youth representation in city planning and policymaking. And I was just wondering, are there, you know, sort of legal restrictions to including young people? Or is this something that we could consider in the future?
So we have, we'll do surveys, and we do do surveys as, as young as 16. Beyond that, you, you get into issues of parental permission and other items that it's typically better handled if you want to survey youth. You kind of go through the schools because that's the best way to contact them. And the schools have mechanisms, you know, that are built in for being able to get that kind of feedback. It's challenging to come at it from the way we would normally survey a community because, you know, just even getting the contact information for youth is, is, is difficult.
So it is feasible to capture like a 16 to 24 age range?
And sort of. We have done, we have done that in some cases, yes. It, it's not often that we do that, but we have done that in some cases.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, well, I think.
Sorry, Rick, just real, real fast. Dr. McClarny, can you tell us, compared to other cities, is this normal? I mean, if it felt like we've got a really good grade there in the last two years, is that what people in other cities are seeing? Or is, is that, was, was that a pretty unique finding?
You know, we have seen, I will tell you, we haven't seen a lot of growth in satisfaction. We have seen a number of cities sustain, right? That they were viewed as high-performing before, and they've been able to sustain that. We have had some cities where things have dipped. You know, it, it's, it's encouraging that, you know, you actually swam upstream during what is a real challenging time. Because again, as I, I think I alluded to, it's not common to see that. And so, you know, you're, you're obviously doing some things right.
Thank you very much.
Any other council members? Okay, well, then I think I want to thank you very much, Ms. McClain, for your presentation. Very helpful, very informative, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we do need to take public comment. We have one hand raised.
Well, thank you, let's do that.
Okay, Ryan Motshemi, please go ahead.
Thank you, Council. My apologies for delaying the start of the other meeting, and also my apologies for speaking rather quickly and I think retroactively sternly, I was trying, in the last comment, I was trying to get a lot of different ideas in. But I, I think that what really stood out to me regarding this community survey was the emphasis on pedestrian projects. And that's something that was important for me to see here. We, we should be implementing pedestrian projects and prioritizing them in a way that helps all San Mateo residents. And that's something that I learned from this, from this survey. I also thought that the, that the projects, the bicycle project support, as well as willingness to make trade-offs, was notable and, and interesting to me as well. And I think that it speaks to a desire to move in the right direction, but also when significant parking removal is required, to have increased outreach and also increased mitigation options that happen ideally prior to implementation of those projects. And that's something important that I think that this survey has gleaned for me. So thank you. I think you guys got a relatively good grade on the survey. And yeah, thank you. I won't delay the meeting any longer.
Thank you very much.
We also have Jordan Grimes.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Jordan.
Good evening, Council. Yeah, just really quickly, like, like Rayon, I, I really appreciate the presentation. I, I think my, my grade for, for the city would be similar, similarly satisfied. I, I think this report is really important for a number of reasons and should be really, should really be kept in mind when we are considering the general plan and other land use planning. It's not a particular surprise that affordable housing is, is still, you know, top of mind for city residents. What was really interesting to me was that keeping building heights low and preserving single-family neighborhoods were things that residents cared about the least when presented with, with choices, especially among renters, young people, and people of color who are most impacted by exclusionary zoning and then other exclusionary health. I also found it really interesting that 63.3% would support building heights up to 12 stories, 68% up to eight stories. That, that, those were surprising numbers even for me, even, even as someone who advocates for those things. And, and was nice to see. And then just the last thing, you know, when you look at a demographic or accurate sample of residents, you get very different results than I think what we see sometimes in public meetings. And so I would encourage us to pursue statistically accurate sampling more when we are considering long-range planning in the city. So thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Dr. Brassier.
Okay.
Hello, Council, thank you again. I wanted to speak about the great job you're doing at trying to get this city to be more bike-friendly. I think it's important, but also I'm kind of concerned because we still have to do something with all these cars. And I support affordable housing because, of course, I live in affordable housing. But at the same time, I, I support it to be something that's healthy. Presently, I live in affordable housing, and mostly affordable housing is near the transit. Unfortunately, our building is right on the station, and we suffer so much noise pollution to the point that it was measured. To the point that it was measured that the noise pollution we are experiencing is deafening. That it can actually affects, affect our hearing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brassier, we got your letter. We all read your letter about that. Do you have something else to talk about?
Yes. So the, also, um, in creating affordable housing. It, it's very important to make sure that the ordinances. Fit that this housing will be protected by regular neighborhood protections for noise. You know, we have, um, street cleaners, uh, for parking lots as late as midnight, one o'clock. So this, it's always in constant noise and environmental pollution. Um, we have many people who are sick from the different, um, train, um, fumes that come by. Uh, our building shakes. So we never have peace in this, in this, uh, building. So going forward with the affordable housing, when you're considering them, please consider a healthy option. In that, uh, project.
Thank you very much. Are those your comments?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
There are no other speakers.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Then I'm going to adjourn this meeting unless somebody has some further business. We'll adjourn for now. And we'll come back to the regular meeting in about three minutes if we can, Madam Clerk, because I need to step into the other room.
I, I have a few buttons to push. I'll do my best.
Thank you.